Regular city council meeting is called to order. The time is 6:00 PM. Before we begin, I kindly ask all council members to please put away cell phones. If you need to conduct personal business during the meeting, please make a motion for a recess. For those participating by phone, please ensure your phone is muted unless you are speaking. Also, when speaking, please remember to state your name for the benefit of those streaming the meeting. As a reminder to all attendees, this meeting is being streamed live. The camera is located at the back of the council chambers above the clock. Our meetings are governed by Robert's Rules of Order in accordance with Wassilla Municipal Code 2.04.090. In order to maintain an orderly and respectful discussion, I respectfully request the council to observe the following guidelines. Please seek recognition before speaking. No member may speak more than twice on the same motion without an affirmative vote to suspend the rules. No member may speak a second time on a matter until all others who wish to speak have had an opportunity to do so. These rules are in place to ensure that everyone's right to speak is respected and to prevent anyone's voice from dominating the discussion. Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cottle?
Here.
Councilmember Graham?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Crafton?
Here.
Councilmember Vlog?
Here.
Councilmember Rubio?
Here.
You do have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilmember Vlog, if you would lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Before changes are discussed, are there conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none, are the changes to the agenda. Mr. Graham?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move item 11 dash, oh, 11.1.1, IM2502, to new business for discussion.
Are there other changes? Is there an objection? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as amended. We are now at special orders of the day. It's the mayor's proclamation recognizing President's Day. The City of Wassilla's proclamation recognizing President's Day, whereas President's Day is a national observance to honor the leadership, vision, and dedication of the Presidents of the United States, past and present. And whereas this day originated as a celebration of George Washington's birthday, honoring the first President's enduring legacy as a leader who set the foundation for our democracy and later came to encompass the contributions of all U.S. Presidents. And whereas the City of Wassilla is committed to fostering an inclusive and equitable community that honors the diversity and cultural heritage of all of its residents. And whereas President's Day is an opportunity to reflect on the sacrifices, achievements, and service of those who have held the highest office in our nation, guiding our country through times of challenge and triumph. And whereas the leadership of these individuals serves as a reminder of the values upon which our nation was built upon, liberty, justice, and equality for all. And whereas the City of Wassilla recognizes the importance of civic engagement and encourages all residents to honor the principles of democracy, leadership, and service exemplified by our nation's Presidents. Now, therefore, I, Glenda D. Liptred, Mayor of the City of Wassilla, do hereby recognize February 17th, 2025, as President's Day in the City of Wassilla and encourage all citizens to take time to reflect on the history and contributions of the Presidents of the United States and to engage in activities that promote unity, understanding, and appreciation for the democratic principles that guided our nation, dated this 10th day of February, 2025. We are now at commission and agencies report. Wassilla High School. Will you please state your name for the record?
Ally Devine from Wassilla High, student body president. So, we were, the Wassilla High School teachers got recognized as employees of the month by the district for all the great things they've been doing. Mrs. Lockwood, Mrs. Robin Lockwood, she got the highest honor teacher you can get, which was the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. And then our music teacher, Mr. Martin, Tyler Martin, got the NHFS Outstanding Music Education of the Year Award. Our students had the highest percentage of growth for English 1 and Algebra 1 Common Assessment in the district. Our girls' basketball team is number one in the state right now. Our boys' basketball team just beat Grace this weekend, who is their number two in the state. And then our girls' basketball coach, Jeannie Hebert, got her 600th win against West Valley on February 1st. Our Battle of the Books team got second at the regional competition. Haley Giacobi got Gay Area Player of the Year for Cross Country, and she's a sophomore. We will be hosting state at the Menard Sports Center for the 18th year, 18th state hockey tournament on this week, February 13th, 14th, and 15th. And our boys are third seed and will be playing Colony at 6:30 on Thursday at the Menard, and it'll be a red out. Next week, we'll be having a guest speaker come to our school, and we'll be having presentations in the theater. Her name is Sandy Snoggrass, and she's the founder of AKA Alaska Fentanyl Response Project. She is a clinical psychologist. Her son Bruce was tragically killed by a fentanyl poisoning in 2021. In time since, Sandy has dedicated herself to sharing her story as a means of increasing awareness and advocating for legislative action, as well as the importance of naloxone kit availability and training. She works regularly with the DEA, local government representatives, senators, and the Alaska government. In June 2022, a bill titled Bruce's Law in Honor of Sandy's Son was officially introduced to Congress by Alaska Senators Lisa Murkowski and Dan Sullivan, as well as Senators Diane Fensteen of California and Maggie Hassan of New Hampshire. If passed, the bill would authorize a public education and awareness campaign focused on the dangers of drugs that could be contaminated with fentanyl and additional preventative measures relating to drug use and addiction. So, next week, we'll be having these presentations in the Wassilla High School Theater. And then finally, the last weekend of February, we will be having our winter dance, which will be surfing into spring, and we'll have a spirit week along with that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of the accomplishments in Wassilla, Hyatt.
Thank you.
We're proud of you. We will now hear from the Public Works Director on his director report.
Good evening, council. I wanted to share some of the many things that are happening within Public Works. I've got a couple photos I'll share with you while the TVs are kicking on. We'll start with parks and properties. I'm sure you all remember that worm spell that we had that brought rain to us. This is a photo of Lake Wassilla Library. It took us two days to pump it down. We knew that we needed to keep access to the library once the rain stopped and we knew it was going to get cold, so we pumped that down. There's a drainage basin in the back there that normally percolates during regular summer rains, but it is not designed to percolate when the ground's already frozen. We'll talk a little bit more about that event and what it's done for other parts of the city. The other update is we had a very successful winter season with all the decorations. The staff built a bunch this summer and set up that really great Christmas Santa workshop area over at Iditarod Park. And some of the, I think the community was very supportive of that. We got a lot of great feedback. It was really great to see the staff think creatively, and they built those structures that you could go get hot chocolate from to store those decorations. So, they put them inside, they carried them back with one of our big loaders, and so they're just really impressive with the thoughtfulness that they put into both the organization and just the creative side of things. The next thing I want to mention was that city was visited by ACOS, which is the Alaska OSHA review. They came through City Hall. You're going to be hearing about that report in the future. They'll also be visiting the rest of the parks, properties, roads, and sewer department in the coming months. So, we'll have some feedback from that. The City Hall inspection had some small things that we've already completed and some big things that are going to come about in that report that we talked about. The next group to talk about is roads. And I'm going to zoom this down so we can see it. This picture is a little big. So, as we mentioned, the summer drywells don't work when they're frozen, so we had pretty substantial ponding, some flooding in areas. No homes were directly affected, but you can tell this homeowner was a little nervous about how close it was getting. We have some ditching projects for the summer, so we'll be addressing this because I think it's safe to say that we should expect to have some more of these warm-up periods in the future winters to come, so we're going to be addressing some of these items so that they're more manageable moving forward. This is also a outlier for the weather these days. This is Sunday Circle, and this is a major glatiation problem within our city limits. We have about three of these right now. And so what we're seeing is groundwater is continuing to migrate as it does, but as soon as it hits the freezing weather, it moves to the top and freezes again, and freezes again, and freezes again. And so this has taken a lot of our attention in the last couple weeks. The warm-up alleviated for a minute, but it also meant that there was more water that needs to be dressed. So, while we have had significantly less snow, which means that our crews and our contractors have been less busy with snow removal, they've been very busy with either digging out this ice with excavators or having steam thaw companies come in. And so we've spent tens of thousands of dollars here this winter to protect at least four homes that are at risk of suffering glatiation damage. Some vehicles are frozen in place. The borough is also having a pretty big time with this further down. If you're not familiar with where Sunday Circle is, it's one of the northernmost sections of the city. It's really the only outlier that we have that goes above Spruce. There's a lake on the east side that drains from borough property or borough zone into the city through Sunday Circle and then back into the borough. And so this section is causing us troubles, and the downstream section, right outside city limits, is impacting at least three multifamily houses. The boroughs had to go out with heavy equipment and steam thaw equipment to try to keep that water flowing. So, this is a hard thing to deal with because we can't stop the water, and keeping it warm enough to keep moving is hard. So, this is going to have our attention for the rest of the winter, and you're going to see that shift in spending as we try to keep these homes out of trouble.
Eric, does the city have steam thawing equipment as well, or do we rely on contractors?
We do not at the moment. We had an old style that was an explosion risk, so my understanding was decommissioned a decade ago. So, we don't have any capability right now. We're teaming up with contractors and working with the borough to have a reciprocal agreement.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Eric. So, with the reduction in snow plowing, do you see that this is going to offset our current costs? Or are we going to have a budget overrun due to the unplanned work here?
I think the major change to our budget is just needing more contractual support with the steam thawing. So, we have a robust relationship with our term contractor, Diver Construction. They're the ones helping us with the equipment. So, that's just repurposing winter callouts for that. But we've had to stand up multiple POs with basically any entity in the valley that has steam thaw capabilities so that we can keep them on call and keep them busy. Their machines go down. We lost one of those contractors last week because both their steam thowers went down. So, we're, we've got a revolving call list for help when we need that.
What's that going to do to our overall winter budget? Is that going to be offsetting?
It's going to be offsetting. I'm not concerned.
More or less.
More or less, yeah. We have, with those rain events, it's been very icy, so we have been out sanding. So, we're going through sand at a pretty typical rate. So, if it's not ice, it's snow, they're putting sand down for it.
Mr. Graham?
Thanks. So, Eric, you said the water at the library was pumped. Was it hauled somewhere? Was it, does it end up going through our sewage system? What happens to that water that you have to pump because the drywells are not working?
Yeah, great question. We utilize the storm system in Cruzy, which doesn't directly connect to that, but it's right next to it. So, we had a pump pumping it up the hill a little bit into the closest storm drain. So, it went into the regular storm drain that drains Cruzy. So, other than Karen feeding it, it was just a person monitoring that pump for a couple days. So, we talked about roads with less snow, more glatiation, the rain event. We used, so if you weren't aware of this, downtown has a storm drain system that can overflow into Lake Lucille, but the first spot that it goes is to a pump station right by the Performing Arts Center. And it pumps up into the first pond at Iditarod Park, and then it navigates its way down. We filled that full, and then we turned off the pumps, and then we let it overflow into Lake Lucille. So, we're trying to mitigate storm outfalls into Lake Lucille, but that storm was impactful enough and the ground was frozen enough that it overwhelmed that system. So, we did our best to limit outfalls, but that's the way the system works. The next thing I'd like to talk about is the airport. So, we're going to have another master planning meeting tomorrow night, starting at 5:30 to 7:30 at the Menard Center. And we're going to be talking about the current phase of the master plan, and this is one of the illustrations that we'll be sharing with the public. But basically, we're going to be showing a short-term, near, I'm sorry, a near-term, midterm, and long-term build-out, and we're excited to receive feedback. And if, and we'll, I'd be happy to bring more information once that meeting's happened. And then the next day, we'll be meeting with the Meadow Lakes Community Advisory Group so that the neighbors outside of city limits right next to the airport see the same information. And I'm sure that we'll have some attendees at the meeting tomorrow, too. Moving on to utilities. If you haven't soared like an eagle over our sewer treatment plant before, this is a view of that. And it comes, this is a good illustration to talk about what we're currently working on for contracts. We have the ongoing sewer discharge permit that we've had a public meeting on, and we're gathering more information for some of the questions, and we're going to have a meeting with the neighbors that we need easements from. But just for a reminder, this, this big blue building that I'm cursoring over is our storage area, and then our admin building is here. This is where our staff meets and rallies for every workday. And then this other blue building is our subdich facility, and that's where the trucks that suck out the subject tanks at all of the businesses and homes that have sewer service from us, it's discharged every day. And then this below-ground circle is our sludge digester. And so that, those solids go into here after being processed in several ways, and air is blown into them. And then after a certain amount of time, after a certain amount of biological activity, the sludge is discharged into one of these three beds where it's supposed to dry, but that doesn't work very well in the winter, so it freezes. And then all of the water that's pumped out of all of the thousand pump vaults that we have in the town come into these lagoons. So, it enters here, and it moves across this way, and then it comes back, and then it's discharged into the four acres of percolation bed that we have. That permit that we're trying to receive is to allow us to discharge that water into the wetlands first. We'll always have those percolation beds. We're going to need them as backups, but we're asking for federal and state approval to do that. One of the highlights for this month was that two of our long-term employees celebrated 25 years at the city. So, we're pleased to announce that Mr. Lance Kopczak and John Becker both have more than 25 years of the city. Lance is going to be retiring in April. He's on the left-hand side of the photo. And so we'll be having a public gathering here before he does so. So, we're really happy to have the mayor come and hand them their recognition and their pins. On the same vein of utilities, we have talked a lot about the Spruce Well and Water Tower System, and we received funding, an FEMA grant, to upgrade the generators there. And so the Kapstone natural gas generators are being installed. They're in place. There's some electrical work going on. They should be operational mid-March, and so we will be running on those systems entirely, using MEA as our backup. And the project's going smoothly, and we're excited to have that reliable connectivity for our most important water system. Moving into water, we have been working on the Wassilla Palmer Interconnect project, and one of the first steps is to get a good handle of exactly what we're working with for our system. And what I wanted to show the council was some really interesting diagrams that we're working on. This colorful document highlights the service zones for Wassilla water. And you can see that there's different colors. Those different colors to mark different pressure zones. So, we start at the orangey-purple color up here, which is Spruce, and then we get into the yellow section, which is the main water zone for all of Wassilla. And so this is, we're located down here, right at the intersection of Parks and KGB. And then some of our water gets pumped up to Mission Hills, and some of the water gets pumped over Pressure Zone 4, which is Lowe's, which is green here, goes down the other side past Walmart, enters into Pressure Zone 5, which is blue, and then the Ranch, which is Pressure Zone 6, and it's kind of purple. So, you see that we have a lot going on in our water system. And what this has allowed us to do is create this functional diagram that's really important for modeling our system. And so these colors are the same as you saw on the map. So, you can see that Spruce is red, it's up on top. We have about a million gallons, a million gallons of storage up in Spruce, and then we have three tanks that are in the main zone, one small tank over Mission Hills, and then we have no water storage in Pressure Zone 4, 5, or 6. And that's what we're going to address with the Herman Road Water Tower that we bought the property on May 24th. You can see that for vulnerabilities, we are very much reliant on the fact that we can pump from the Richmond Hills Booster Station up and over, but in a time of emergency, it's imperative that we have water in Pressure Zone 4, too. So, we're moving in with that. The next drawing has to do with the connections for the Wassilla Palmer Interconnect. And so this is just a really interesting, really interesting diagram to show how close our systems are. Palmer's in pink, we're in blue, and there are two proposed alignments. One that goes along basically the access road and Parks Highway and connects in at the hospital down here, and one that comes up off Spruce, then goes up Bogard and connects up here by Colony. And so we're continuing to evaluate both alignments so that the best decision for the long-term development in the valley is met. This is a partnership that we have with MSB. Another map that I think the council will find very interesting is a quantification of how old our water system is. So, anything that's red is more than 40 years old. And so what you can see is that the downtown core was built first. We were actually, all of our water came from the Iditarod tank that served the school initially, and then we were allowed to join on with it. And then at some point, that, that was, it was connected to Spruce in the 80s, or in the late 90s, and that meant that we didn't have a water source in downtown anymore. We're working with the state to re-license that well, and we're going to bring that back on. It's another 250 gallons per minute that we feel is very valuable for the water system. And then you can see in general, the water system branched out. So, this is the system that went down to the Menard when it was built, and this is the system that went to the airport. Mission Hills was its own system until we connected into it. And then we went down Old Matt, and we got to Walmart, and then we connected down Old Matt to the Ranch with Garden Terrace PRV. And then the last map that I'll share with you is a quantification of how big the pipes are. So, if I go down to the table of contents down here, you'll see that our pipes range from 4-inch up to 24-inch. And so our largest pipes are coming out of Bumpus, out of Spruce. We have a 16-inch that runs along the highway here over to Fred Meyers. And so between these two maps, we can quantify the age and the size, and that allows us to start to build a forecast on the state of the infrastructure and what pipe segments are, you know, approaching the end of their useful life and that we need to start budgeting for maintenance or replacement, depending on their state. It will also point to, you know, where we really need to investigate their state of condition so that we prevent failures, you know, that take the system down or cause havoc. The last project I want to talk about was the City Hall assessment, so.
Before we move on from water, may I ask?
Yes.
I've got two questions here, and I'll just leave them together. Number one, what are, what's the responsibility of the city to the Wassilla Water Service Area, you know, and the responsibility of Palmer to the Palmer Water Service Area? Obviously, the majority of that area isn't served by city water, but it's called the Wassilla Water Service Area. So, if you could kind of talk about that for a second. And then the second thing, when you talked about the inner tie there, you know, when that inner tie is put in, are we going to be able to do that similar to a utility easement? Or are we actually going to have to dig up the road to put those pipes in there? When I say similar to a utility easement, those generally happen at the edge of the right-of-way easement, so you're not digging up pavement. So, those are two questions.
Yeah, thank you. So, for the first question, the Wassilla Water Service Area is, predates me, so I'm not exactly sure how it was identified, but it definitely involves the reaches of our water system. And I think what it does is, basically, it's a, it's a mapping quantification system with DEC. So, we say, I guess what we did is we proposed to DEC and said we'd like to have control over municipal water in this area with the idea that it could expand someday. So, I don't know exactly what vehicle created initially, but what it does is it allows us to, you can see both alignments remain in that area, and then it picks a designation between us and Palmer, much like how higher road is kind of the designation for addresses. To your question about how the water lines would connect, it is always less impactful to install a water line down the side of the road, out of the pavement. We don't want to have to pay to repave a road if we can help it. Fire hydrants are on the side of the road. So, that's typically how it's aligned, is you choose the side of the road that makes the most sense for water users and for where you want the fire hydrants. And then that's the alignment, usually along the ditch line. When you have separate pathways, you have to be careful about which side of that you're on. But we, it's best for the project cost to stay out of asphalt as much as possible.
Right, but do we have the right to utilize the utility easements? I mean, typically, they're electric and telecom.
Yes, there's a request process we go through with whoever the entity is. It's most likely DOT. So, we file a utility request, and, you know, we know that there are expectations put up upon us to be in the DOT right-of-way, and so we follow their permitting requirements. But it's pretty standard.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Eric, so when we talk about connecting between Palmer and ourselves, do we, I know we've had those discussions in the past. What's the economic input? I mean, are we going to be supplying part of their water or vice versa? How do we, how do we handle the inner costs there?
Yeah, great question. So, that definitely is, the functional relationship still needs to be worked out, but the idea. So that definitely is, the functional relationship still needs to be worked out, but the idea would be that we are each other's backups. And so if we have a water emergency, we are connected and we have the controls necessary and also the metering necessary to know how much we purchased from Palmer or vice versa. The other benefit that it provides is that infrastructure that links us means that anything along those corridors is available for higher-density development. And so that's one of the reasons that the Matsuburo joined us in this, is they're very interested in meeting some of the density pressures that they're receiving. So if you have water service for multifamily homes or commercial, and you have a municipal water system that you can connect to, those alignments become, you have higher density, which is a benefit for planning, for land use.
So obviously, the advantage is, I mean, that's powerful, is really, I mean, my main thing is how it's going to affect us financially.
We would, we would typically see the water use in an emergency. So that's where, that's where it benefits us, is to be able to draw on their capacity when we have a large event that needs water.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton?
To the next couple photos you had there about the age of the system that we have, or yeah, specifically this one. You and I have had quite a few conversations around the Mission Hills issues that we've had with water quality. With a lot of this other red piping I'm seeing on here, are we experiencing similar issues in these areas as well?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
And then, go on, sorry. Well, I was going to mention that we have the Bulk Water Station, which is off the end of this facility here. It's not old, but it's connected to some of our oldest pipes, and so we have ongoing brownwater complaints there too. So we do a fair amount of flushing in the segments that are red because of water quality.
I feel like I remember a deputy administrator talking about that previously. And then to add on to that, are we, kind of what Mr. Grammer asked, do we know how much of this is underneath pavement, or how much are in that right-of-way utility when it comes to where these pipes are at? I know we've had some conversations around going, oh, look, we found a pipe that we didn't know existed, so...
We, we do, and the reason that we know more about that now is because we are assimilating our ASBILs and building this map. These are static drawings I bring you tonight, but we have an ongoing mapping project related to this, where we are taking the ASBIL data, and then this spring, we'll be out surveying in the valves and the roads and tuning up where the mapping shows. And so we'll very much be able to tell when a water line is in the road or outside the road. As you can imagine, the older sections of town are going to have the water line in the road. That's just the way they were built. But if we look at Old Matt, if we look at the water line that runs up over the hill by Lowe's, those have tended to be out of the pavement because they're, they're the newer sections. So it's a mix. A lot of it's in the road, though.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Kathy. Eric, I know with our aging water system that there's a lot of things we need to look at replacing down the road. I'm just wondering, has there ever been any discussion of long-range plans of trying to connect more of our city onto our water system? You know, I, and we, you know, just look at the maps, it looks like, you know, the majority of our residential are not on there. And where I work, I get to deal with a lot of the water testing for subdivision wells, and there's a real issue with arsenic and problems like that. So I'm just wondering if there's anything, the pie in the sky dreams of, of connecting more of our residents to our water system?
Great question. So we've talked multiple times about needing to update our master plan. This coupled with the old master plan is what will build our new one as we work through that. The cost of expansion is very expensive, and so we'll have to see when we can pull in the, like, lifetime cost of our facilities, as we have them quantified now. And we can look to, you know, ideas to the future, but then we can put a price tag to it. And I think a lot of expansion's going to fall to the wayside because of the overall cost. And so then that's where that decision has to be made of where, where do we expand to, and then what is the, what initiates that? What level of, what number of services would, would pencil out to bring a mainline extension down? So we definitely are getting closer to having all the numbers that we need to make those future decisions with the new master plan.
Madam Mayor. Elena. Can we get a copy of these slides?
Absolutely.
They're colorful and awesome. I just want to look at them a little bit closer if we can. Thank you.
Last thing I mentioned is the City Hall assessment. So we talked about having an architect join us. So we have Wolf Architects, who has interviewed staff, mapped this facility, and map com using the 3D scanner. I'd be happy to show you that when we talk about the report. So they are putting together their findings, and our current schedule is to bring a draft document to the council in the first meeting of March. So unless something slips, it might slip to the second meeting, but the goal right now is to bring the initial findings to the council, and we can show you the 3D scans, talk about their value in mapping this area. And they also, they're pretty neat to look at, and so we have both of those for these buildings. What also rolls into that is that Akos inspection and the asbestos that's known in this building. So that's going to be a top-of-mind discussion in that report, and also as we work with Akos for the findings of their inspection. So just wanted to put that on the council's radar.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
So, I'm guessing this is the report that we talked about for the, for the, can you talk to programs and projects that were specifically addressed during the budget last year and where we are on those projects? And if you don't have that in front of you, if you could prepare a white paper or something and have that for us at a future meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Eric. We will now hear from Dell to receive an update on the comprehensive plan.
My name is Lakwita Chimalowski. I'm the Land Use Planning Manager with Dell, here tonight to talk to you about the Wasilla Comprehensive Plan and what we're doing. Tonight's just to kind of kick off the project, give you a little bit of background about our team, and then talk to you a little bit about the comprehensive plan and why it's important. So for those of you that are familiar with all that, please bear with me if I'm telling you things you already know, but just want to make sure we're all on the same page as we move forward. So a little bit about our team. We have Dell, of course, leading the project. We have McKinley Group as part of our team. They most recently finished the SEDs with the city of Wasilla. And then Community Attributes, which is a firm that we work with out of Portland, Oregon, on plans like this. And so they'll be helping us with growth strategies and the future land use plan map. A little bit about Dell, for those of you who aren't familiar, we were founded in Anchorage, Alaska in 1962, and have since expanded with offices throughout Alaska and the Pacific Northwest. So one of the nice things about our team is that we have a lot of local folks that you'll see throughout the project, and I actually have Carly Lamoth with me, who is, also works with me in the Land Use Planning Department at Dell. But we have a nice bench of experts within Dell and within the rest of our team that we can tap as we go along for their technical expertise. Some recent plans that we've worked on are the Bethel Comprehensive Plan and Long-Range Transportation Plan. We were involved in the City of Soldatna Comprehensive Plan. And then, of course, McKinley Group just finished the Wasilla Comprehensive Economic Development Strategies. And we are working with Community Attributes on the City of Waschugle Comprehensive Plan, and then also working on the City of Yerantin Comprehensive Plan. So we have a nice mix of projects to pull from. So for a little bit of background on why a comprehensive plan is important and what it is, so a comprehensive plan is a long-term plan that guides and captures the visions and goals of the community. So, and they're usually like 10- to 20-year outlooks. And so you're, you have a comprehensive plan that was last completed in 2011. And so the reason that they're important is that it creates an opportunity to be proactive in how you look at your development, as you look at your infrastructure, whether it's your roads, or you guys were just talking about your utilities. It starts to lay a plan out for what those things are that are most important to the community. It also sets the stage for grant funding, because it shows that there's support for projects and that there's community buy-in. And it provides stability. So as I mentioned, they're 20 or 10- or 20-year outlooks, and in that time, I think we can all recognize that there may be changes within the city, within leadership, and so the plan really helps document what the vision and goals are for the community, even as we all change maybe positions or go on to other things. So one of the things that's really important about this plan is that it's really a plan that's for the community, and so it's really important to have a lot of community outreach. And so what, we have all these steps that we're going to take as we go through the comprehensive plan update, but making sure that we find different ways to engage the community throughout that process, because this is, this is your plan at the end of the day, and we're here to help facilitate that. So a little bit more about the public process and how we typically approach these types of projects. So currently, we're working on a community engagement plan that we'll be working with staff to develop and finalize. And through that, we're going to be identifying, you know, the number of meetings, stakeholders, how we might engage folks. We use a variety of tools, whether it's surveys or open houses or pop-ups. We find, try to find lots of different ways to engage people in, in where they're at. And then we have that community process, not only as we develop the draft, but on through adoption of the plan. So a little bit about the elements of a comprehensive plan. So usually, there's a vision statement, and certainly, there's one in your current comprehensive plan. And so that's really like your broad aspirational description of where you want to be as a community. And so what that helps to do is, is when you're looking at your goals and actions, you're comparing that to the vision to make sure that they align. And so then also, there's plan, the plan elements, which in your plan, these are the, you have transportation, land use, you have a section on downtown, community assets, economic vitality, intergovernmental coordination. We will be taking a look at that to see if those are the elements that are still applicable, if there's things that should get added or taken away. And then within each of those elements, there's goals, and then there's objectives and actions. And so the goals are kind of your, your broader ideas, and then the objectives and actions start getting more specific. And then finally, your implementation, which is telling you who's going to be responsible for doing it, and what timeframe that they're going to do it in, and what resources do they need. So this is just a, the vision statement from your comprehensive plan today. And so as we start this process, this will be one of the things we'll be taking a look at to make sure that this vision statement is still applicable, or if it needs to go away completely, we need to come up with a new one, or make some tweaks to this one. And then this is just examples of what's currently in your comprehensive plan as far as each of the elements and the goals that are listed within it. And just to give you an example, so for example, one of the goals under transportation is to provide for streets and highways that promote mobility, connectivity, and access for both present and future uses. And then the objective related to that goal is to continue to improve and upgrade city-maintained streets and highways. And then the action was to update and maintain the city streets and highways plan, set aside funds to annually maintain and improve existing city roads. So we'll also be going through and looking at these goals and actions, and making sure that there's, we'll look at ones that may have been completed already, things that don't make sense anymore, or things that need to get added. So as I mentioned, that'll be one of our first steps, is to really take a deep dive into what you have in your plan today. And in the near future, you'll all be receiving a survey from us to help us, help guide us in that process. So I would ask that if you haven't looked at your comprehensive plan in a while, take a look at it, and then you'll be seeing a survey from us probably the next few weeks, and I'd ask you to please give us your feedback. And yeah, this was just, like I said, to give you a glimpse at what we're doing and how we're getting started, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Graham.
Thank you. Thank you for the overview there. So do you have a timeline that you could refer us to or anything?
Yeah, so we're putting together the schedule now, but this process will occur over the next year or so, and we'll be back, you know, at certain intervals to give you updates or to get information, and there may be opportunities to do work sessions on particular topics. But typically, these plans take a little over a year to complete.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Johnson.
Okay, going back to this slide here then, so we're sort of on this thinking comprehensive, is that where the, where we are, and we're a year out from there?
Yeah, so we're actually, let me go back to that slide. So we're really just, we're at the very far left of the slide, where we're just getting started, looking at data analysis and existing conditions, and then moving forward from there. So setting up the schedule, figuring out our communication plan with community outreach, and then looking at all your existing plans and information that you have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Graham.
Thank you. So in your review and development of the plan here, where does expanding the city limits fall in here? I mean, you're talking about a plan that's going to last, you know, theoretically 10 years. We've been putting this one off for five years almost to redo it. Is your look going to say, you know, these are areas that would be logical for the city to expand into, or, or how, how does that process work in the comprehensive plan development?
Yeah, thank you. It's a great question. So one of the things we will be looking at as we develop the comprehensive plan is a land use plan map, which could include where it may make sense to expand the city boundaries. And we may, you know, some of that may come through the public outreach that we do, that that's a desire of the community to do that. And then those land use plan maps kind of show your future vision of what the land uses may be, and that would be a good time to look at where it may make good sense to expand your boundaries.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you.
We are now at public participation.
Madam Mayor, did we skip planning commission report?
They didn't have a meeting. Crystal, can you answer that?
No, they had a meeting last, well, it was last Tuesday after, what was it? The first of the month they did.
The city planner's out, so she'll give a report.
Okay, can we strike that from the agenda then, so it doesn't look like we dealt with?
Anyway, we are at public participation, public hearing, three minutes per person. Chief Rapsen.
Don't you want to do public on ordinance first?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, okay.
I'll catch up. Madam Deputy Clerk, please read ordinance serial number 25-03 by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is ordinance serial number 2503, amending Wasilla Municipal Code Two.
The public hearing on ordinance serial number 25-03 is now open. Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward them again by stating your first and last Seeing no one, I will close public hearing and bring it back to the dais. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance serial number 25-03?
Madam Mayor, I move ordinance serial number 2503.
Is there a second?
Rubio seconds.
It's been moved by Councilmember Crafton and sanctified by Councilmember Rubio to adopt ordinance serial number 25-03. Is there discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we had a little bit of a conversation when this was just an introduction a few weeks back, but just to remind the council, a lot of this is a housekeeping thing. We noticed that it was possible that if somebody wanted to hold multiple offices, they could. And part of the conversation Mr. Johnson had brought up was, you know, morally, wouldn't somebody not do that? And we're like, well, we would hope so. But we just wanted to, again, make sure that this was something in our code to prevent even the consideration of something like that, because we want our mayor and our council members to be wholly dedicated to the city and not to another body in any such way. So, I think that was about it for me. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Mr. Johnson.
Madam Mayor, council. Just as a general philosophy, I mean, I look at this as just we're adding an ordinance for while... While there is a reason, it gets to be what-if, what-if. So, I'm really ambivalent, and I just hate we're adding ordinances like this just because what-if. Thank you.
Further discussion? Your nun, is there objection to the motion? Your nun, the motion is adopted. Now, we're on to persons to be heard. It's a time for members of the public to share their views with the council. This is not a question-and-answer period or a time for dialogue. Speakers may be referred to administration, or issues raised may be taken under advisement by the council or administration. Chief Rapsin, please start by stating your name for the record.
Bill Rapsin, Chief of Police for Wassilla PD. So, last couple of weeks ago, I was up here talking about ordinance 2502, on how I believe I read a passage of the collective bargaining part in their contract that says something to the effect of Title III. What I failed to kind of articulate, and hopefully, I can articulate that a little bit better today, is regardless if that gets changed to a different or circumvented in any other way, how I meant to say is how that operational will affect me is I'm kind of getting hung up on a staff report, on the second paragraph of the staff report, which says additionally, this ordinance specifies that the council has the authority to retitle or transfer existing positions after they are created by council. Any such changes must be approved by the council through the adoption of the resolution. Seeing that the council approves and adds positions, my question is, is that how does that affect me operationally through the PD? And I think it's substantial. Whether it's today, tomorrow, three years from now, a different chief, a different council, how we operate that is that, from my understanding, is if I have three detectives or three investigations or investigators, and the council seems fit to put them in patrol, that's going to be a change in the working conditions, and I can assure you that the collective bargaining unit will have a say in that. Whether you guys want to move forward with this, it's just I have a lot of unanswered questions. That's how it's going to affect me. What happens in an emergency situation where we have a major crime?
Public order, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, Mr. Rapsin is testifying as a member of the administration, has identified himself as the Chief of Police, and testifying as the Chief of Police. This is a time for public participation, not for the administration to discuss the ordinance.
This is the only place that administration has for them to be able to discuss it.
I think that's highly inappropriate. This is public participation. If Mr. Rapsin, as a private citizen, wanted to say, I think this is going to be bad for the police department, that would... This would be the place to do that. However, as Chief of Police, he should sit there, much as I do, when I go to the Planning Commission and say, hey, I'm Stu Graham, I'm a city council member, but I'm also a citizen of the city of Wassilla, and I'm here to testify on my personal beliefs as to the impact of any sort of action that the Planning Commission may be taking. And I think this is appropriate place for Mr. Rapsin to testify on whatever personal things would affect him, not on professional things, which would be city-oriented things, administrative sort of things.
Holly, you want to weigh in on this?
Yeah, I mean, it is a little different when it's a council member versus a member of administration. So, a member of administration doesn't... They're not elected to serve, so they're not part of the body that's going to be making a decision. So, to the extent he appears during public comment and sticks within the confines of public comment, I've seen that done in communities. The other option is to have a time where administration weighs in. Another option is, we really use a sponsor report. I would call it a sponsor report in Wassilla, which is, you know, which works very well, and it gives you the information. You can see the fiscal note. But a lot of communities will use a staff report in a more traditional sense. So, they'll have a sponsor report, which the sponsor of the ordinances will state sort of the purpose, or they'll put that and whereas clauses, and then, they'll have an administrative staff report that accompanies that where staff will share their comments regarding what they think, given their, you know, and in this particular case, the ordinance may impact public safety. The chief may write the staff report, and then, you would... You could ask questions that way. So, generally, there's a mechanism to talk with staff. If we don't have that mechanism, you can use public comment, or you could create a mechanism, if that's helpful.
Yes, that is helpful. Thank you very much. And I think that mechanism exists. I mean, the mayor routinely calls on staff to testify during ordinances, so I think that mechanism is already there. So, once again, I would think this is an inappropriate place for administration to testify, in my opinion.
Chief, continue.
As I was saying, you have... If I have an emergency situation where we have a major crime, and I need to reassign officers as they seem fit, how I read this, or whether it's the intent of the ordinance or not, is how does it see this? I'm going to need council approval to do that switch. Chances of that are happening are frequent, but I have to look at kind of how the ordinance is written, and I have a lot of unanswered questions that I feel that needs to be clarified, so that I have an understanding of kind of what the purpose of this ordinance is, and how I can apply this to the daily operations of the police department. You know, like, we are a very dynamic police department. There's things that change rapidly, pretty quickly, and I feel it's my responsibility and my job is to appropriate those resources that they seem fit, regardless if it's transferring, move somebody over to detective, a promotion, and kind of relating back to the union CBA is that if you affect the working rights or benefits of an employee, I can assure you that they will... They will have an argument that the attorneys can figure out. So, for me, I have a lot of unanswered questions. That's just a tidbit of kind of the questions that I had, given that there's very little information directed towards us.
Madam Mayor, I realize this is not in a normal fashion, but I would like to ask a question, because you called for the no questions could be asked for. In this case, I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I'm really super confused here, because the ordinance has two pieces. A says no new positions, and you don't create new positions, so that wouldn't affect you. You can't just pull a new position out of the... Out of your head. And B says no position shall be re-titled or transferred to another department. I guess I'm really confused. I have never seen a place where an officer from the police department has ever been moved to Public Works, or Public Works moved to the police department, or Finance to the police department. I mean, I don't understand how that would affect your daily operation, because you are the department. So, what you do with your department is immaterial from my perspective to this ordinance. So, can you explain how that would affect me, please?
I agree with you. I'm confused too. I would never have an officer go to Public Works unless they applied for that position. Then, they wouldn't be certified. What I mean by that is, is that I don't would... I don't see anywhere in there that... That a transfer from a patrol officer to a detective, or vice versa. Typically, a detective is promoted. This right here says that if the council seems fit, of how I'm interpreting it in the intent, but it's just... I get you're shaking your head, no. But that's how I'm reading it, and that's how I'm perceiving it, is that if you have a detective that the council seems fit, that needs to go to an SRO, needs to go to a patrol, that you guys would have, even the council would have the ability to do that. And I'm just saying that there would be an argument from the unions, and I guess also with me, if the operational aspect of things, if that was the case. So, that's... Go ahead, sir.
But in this case, chief, you're just talking about changes within your department that you and the mayor control.
I don't see in the staff report that that limits just the department.
No, that's what it says. It says, "Transfer to another department." It doesn't say within a department. You can do whatever you want to within a department. It says, "Transfer to another department," which is really what we're trying to address here.
And then, it also says division, which technically, I have four.
Okay, then, we can get rid of division. I mean, if that's...
I just want some clarification on how I operate, because how I'm interpreting this is that it's going to... I have questions when it's an emergency.
I see your point. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Okay. And seeing no one else, we will close. Public participation. And there, it's... There's no items for approval under the consent agenda, so we'll move directly to unfinished business. Madam Deputy Clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is one ordinance under unfinished business, ordinance serial number 25-02, amending Wassilla Municipal Code, Chapter 3.55, Salary Administration Plan, to Grant the City Council Authority to Create, Retitle, or Transfer Positions. This item was postponed from the January 27, 2025 council meeting. A motion to adopt is pending.
Is there further discussion on this ordinance? Mr. Graham.
Madam Mayor, I proposed ordinance 2502, and based on some information that was given us today, the council is in receipt of this memo that says confidential memo attorney-client privilege, which was the client here being the city council, the attorney, of course, being our city attorney. Based on that information, which was given to us today, I move to postpone a consideration of ordinance 2502 to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second the motion. Do have a question about it, though. I'm just curious why he's choosing to postpone it, is all. I just want to open up for discussion about it.
Okay. The motion has been made to postpone and by Mr. Graham and sanctified by Mr. Crafton. Is there discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, the reason I would like to postpone this is so that all of the council members have the ability and the time to digest things. I think it's... I think it's great that we got this information from our attorney, but for us to get the information, you know, 15 minutes before the council meeting, kind of leaves no time to digest it, no time to look at it, particularly since a part of what is being done here would actually move one piece of ordinance from one section to another. So, based on that, I think we need to each have time to digest this, and if there are individual discussions that need to happen with our city council attorney, which is the city attorney, I should say, and then, allows those discussions to happen, so that you have an informed council making an informed decision.
Is there further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Johnson.
I see now, after the testimony by our Chief of Police, that we do have a slightly flawed proposal before us. And I think that this particular memorandum that we sent is trying to address that flaw. And I think by removing or division from the whole ordinance, this whole memorandum here becomes a moot point, because that was not the intent of what this ordinance was really designed to do. We were trying to get to control of our budget within the divisional organizations in the city, so we're not moving money from Finance to MatCom just because we want to do it. Okay? That was what the intent was originally set up to do with this particular ordinance. How a specific organization runs their organization and how they move people within it, that's not the intent here.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor? Yeah, and here's just a little discussion, too, even if we do decide to postpone it. I think having the verbiage in here... Let me get to it. You know, it has... Where is it? Yeah. "Granting the council authority to create, retitle, or transfer positions." First of all, I think it should have that we would approve, not we have the authority to create a position for somebody's department or retitle it.
We're discussing postponing this. I think this is currently discussing amendments or changes to it. Topic right now is in regards to if we're going to postpone this or not.
Just like Mr. Johnson said, you know, it's something, if we do postpone it, at least this is some food for thought for next time. That's all, just like Mr. Johnson. So, I just wanted to say, I think, looking at approval, instead of us being able to create, I did look at the examples that were given, and they're all budget affecting. So, I think, just like Mr. Johnson said, you know, if it's going to affect the budget, yeah, we need to approve that. You know, if you want to, you know, the chief wants to go back and forth. The reason we've approved them in the past, it looks like it because it made a budget adjustment. So, other than that, you know, they're the experts. You know what you need to do in your department and your division. You do that. We discuss the budget. So, I just wanted that in there before, you know, if we postpone it or whatever, just some food for thought. Thanks.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not wholly opposed to postponing, just because, again, I mean, this is a lot to digest 15 minutes before the meeting. Honestly, I... Though, before I decide, I would like the attorney, if she can, to weigh in on what our chief had spoken to earlier, and kind of, I mean, really, the main conversation here. Is this something we do need to postpone, or is our ordinance good enough to go ahead with it?
But that's not our intent.
Madam Mayor.
Would you let our...
I would like to speak prior to the attorney. If we move forward on this today, I am going to propose a substantial amendment to move this from Wassilla Municipal Code, Chapter 3.55, to Chapter 5.02, Operating Budget Policies, which is a significant change, and therefore, I think having the opportunity to digest exactly how that happens is important. So, I'm not trying to cut off the attorney there, but I am just saying that we're... I don't plan on moving forward with this as written.
Okay. Holly, would you weigh in, or can you?
Sure, I can weigh in. I mean, I think... I do think, and I apologize that you have the memo 15 minutes before, you know, we were working on it, and this memo was actually spurred by the administration asking, what are the implications of this? And so, and what's going to happen after if this is adopted? How do we...
Sure, I can weigh in. I mean, I think, I do think, and I apologize that you have the memo 15 minutes before, you know, we were working on it, and this memo was actually spurred by the administration asking, "What are the implications of this?" And so, and what's going to happen after, if this is adopted? How do we move through this? And so that is what the memo was drafted in that sense, and with the hope of just providing council with a layout of the options, which I absolutely can do here, which your options are, to move it to another section. One of your options is to move forward, of course. That option carries with it some vulnerability, given the city administration's position regarding the nature of the change and the terms of the collective bargaining agreement, which do have language that will then, you know, so that's, will trigger the, a discussion regarding whether or not those provisions in the collective bargaining agreement apply to this, to this particular type of change for Title III, based on the broad language in the CBA, right? And the other option is to, is to sort of step back and look at this change in light of the Title III revisions, which the administration has actually given us their Title III revisions for review. They did that in December. So that has been with our office, and we are in the process of reviewing that, and I'm hoping that that will be coming to you very soon. So that's another way to do it. And this is all sort of summarized in the memo. So that's, that's sort of one issue, but that, if I can address Councilmember Crafton's question more directly, which is, what is the implication of what the police chief pointed out? I mean, one thing I will say is, it's not really a legal issue. That is an administration issue. What he's saying is, this is the impact, the potential impact on the Police Department, and the inefficiencies that that's going to cause for, which I believe is, you know, it's absolutely appropriate for council to consider that. But it doesn't have, if you want to leave the terms division in there, you know, you absolutely can do that. I do think that what, the more, the broader the scope of the approval granted to council in this particular arena, the farther away you get from the budget itself, which I feel like some council members are mentioning this, too, the more likely we have to analyze the impact on, under the CBA. You know, so if we are doing something that impacts whether a investigator becomes a, you know, a patrol officer becomes a detective or vice versa, then that is a substantive matter, change in employment terms that affects employment in a way that's going to sort of trigger negotiations, right? It's going to trigger a process of notice and then discussion. That doesn't mean that the, I want to be very clear, that unions do not have the ability to trump your legislative authority as council. They do not, you know, but they absolutely have an ability under the CBA to trigger that conversation with the union and to impact what the application of those rules are on the union employees. So let's say that council adopts this ordinance, and there is an implication for retitling or transferring between divisions, right? And the union flags that the department would send out the notice to the, to the unions, and that discussion happens. And through that process, they say, you know, through negotiations, it's not applicable to union employees. Well, that would take, while the law would remain the same, its effect and impact on union members would be different than non-union members. So that is just, there's the lay of the land. I know, clear as mud, I apologize. But, so I think the memo lays that all out, or some of that out. So you might want to take, I mean, I think the options are, maybe take a recess and let everyone digest it. I'm sorry that that's necessary, but that might be one thing. Or postponing the ordinance may be another option.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you. I mostly just wanted to go to Mr. Graham. Thank you for some of the insight. Mr. Graham, I would have loved your insight about changing it. If you'd have started with that on the postponing, I would have helped a little bit. That's all I was going to say. So thank you. Thank you for explaining that as well. I'm for postponing this, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Graham has made the motion to postpone until the next, or the first meeting in March?
Regular, next regular.
Oh, is it February 24? Okay. Is there a second?
Seconded it already.
Mr. Crafton, second.
And... You know, I wish I could have the ability to fire this council. But anyway, is there objection to the motion? Here are none. It is postponed until February 24, the next regular City Council meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question regarding the confidential memo from the attorney. Does that information remain confidential, or is that confidentiality lifted?
No, that's Attorney/Client Privilege memo in the sense that it's attorney advice to a member of the control group. So the mayor, administration, and council members all are within the control group of the city. So its confidentiality is protected, but you certainly can discuss it amongst your...
So the memo is confidential, but discussion of items within the memo would not violate confidentiality?
I tried to balance the sharing options versus sharing, like there are, you know, I tried to share what I could, that I thought was appropriate for public discussion, and limit that to the best of my ability.
I'm just asking if we need to, if we need to account for these seven or eight copies of that memo.
Oh, that's a good question. I would just say, I'm not sure what the clerk's office does, but I think as long as you don't share them or disseminate. Sarah, do you collect memos when you give Attorney/Client Privilege memos to council, or do you just distribute them with a note of confidentiality?
We only collect them in executive session.
Okay.
Other than that, I marked all of these covered.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, can we take a five-minute recess? We got another big presentation.
Five-minute recess. It is 7:17. We will reconvene at 7:24. We are back on the record at 7:22. We are now at new business. Madam Deputy Clerk, please read the title of the first item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the presentation of the fiscal year 2024 Comprehensive Annual Financial Audit. Ms. Joy Mariner from BDO USA LLP.
There you go.
Hello, thank you, Madam Mayor. I always call you Mrs. Mayor, but that's not correct either.
No.
Madam Mayor, it's much more distinguished. Hello, everyone. My name's Joy Mariner, and I serve as the lead engagement partner for the audit of the City of Wasilla. And just a pleasure to be with you here tonight. I love watching city councils work and the way they operate, and I love that your council is engaged. That's one of the best things about the City of Wasilla. I've worked on your audit for quite some time, and I've always appreciated your level of attention and discussion. We have a few things to cover today. Basically, the audit wrap-up provides just a summary of the audit results. You also received last week the draft of the financial statements, and the final was given to you tonight. There's some printing nuances that go into that, but there are no changes to the draft that you received. The draft is the final, although this one has the pretty colors and the signature on it. So we did go final since you received that draft. We just didn't want to wait and give you this massive of a document right today without a chance to have looked at it. You also received a single audit report, and I'm not going to be going through that document because the results of that single audit are fairly boring and are already covered in the wrap-up. So with that, I'm going to move forward. I love this to be a discussion. If there's something that you want to ask along the way, please let the mayor know so that I can answer it as we move along. So let me just start out by telling you about the process of the audit. We came in, did fieldwork in November, and we drafted the financial statements on your behalf. So after that, we drafted the financial statements. We also tested your federal grant compliance and your, all of those types of things. We're issuing earlier than we have the last couple of years. Last year, I think we issued at the end of March, and the year before was quite a lot of difficulty with turnover and some of those things. If you remember, there were some issues. This year, we're issuing back, you know, here it is in February, early February. We were essentially done with all of our work at the end of January, and we're attempting to get back to that schedule of, you know, issuing by end of December, I think is the goal. So let's talk really quickly about the audit results, because your team has worked really hard to put together this packet. I'm not going to cover a ton of the pages here, but this is really what you're paying for me to do. And do I have control over this? I do. Look at that. And so let's talk about, just at a high level, what we're going to talk about, really just the status of the work, how the quality is of the statements, significant risks, journal entries, and then we'll talk about internal controls. In terms of audit results, it says substantially completed because we sent this to you last week. However, the audit is now completed. If you look at the third bullet point there under audit results, and I'm on page seven, if you're following along on paper. We did issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's a clean opinion that you would want, as a council member, to see attached to your statements. The first bullet point outlines a couple key things. We come in and conduct the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. We also have to follow government auditing standards because you receive federal financial assistance. And then we also follow the federal, what we call single audits, uniform guidance standards. In this case, we also are looking for reasonable but not absolute assurance. So there are certain things I test 100%. Your checking account, for example, I'm going to confirm that with the bank every time, every year. Any entries that are posted by a senior member of management, I'm going to look at those, right? But there are samples employed as part of our audit methodology regarding payroll, or cash receipts, or expenses. And so this is not absolute assurance that the financial statements are free material misstatements, but we do employ a risk-based approach. So we look at areas that are higher risk or are more complex. And then our auditing standards require us to look at specific things as well. So the fourth bullet point there, I'll just mention, in terms of internal control, we did issue an internal, Government Auditing Standards Report, which includes compliance with laws and regulations. And we had no findings there. We look at things like your payroll tax reporting, or your pension reporting, compliance with City Code to some degree on areas that we would normally look at, like procurement. And then we also look at compliance with your Equal Employment Opportunity Law, or Minimum Wage Law, those types of things. So no findings on Government Auditing Standards Report. And then on the single audit report, we also issued an unmodified opinion. So that is really looking at your major programs. Did we identify any areas of compliance risk, compliance violations, and no compliance violations there. We do have one area that we reported as an area of improvement that we'll talk about in a minute around lease review, and that's just related to a journal entry we found, although I will say it had almost zero impact to your actual net results for the fund that was related to. So just overall, last bullet point I'll just highlight for you, just, we want to thank your team. Everything we asked for, they gave us. They were very responsive. One thing I will just say, with Cassie being new in this role, she really took the time to learn what's in the statements. She asked a lot of questions after we drafted it. She found some things she didn't, that weren't where she wanted them to be. She, especially on the cash flows, which usually is only me looking at the cash flows, she really dived into these statements to figure out that the numbers tied, did they agree, did she agree with the numbers in here? So I really want to just thank her for that level of engagement. We don't always get that, and it's clear she's committed to making sure these are correct for you. So let's talk about the quality of financial reporting. We didn't have any concerns here. In fact, you are submitting this document to the Government Finance Officers Association. You haven't received a certificate of achievement in financial reporting from GFOA since, I think, the 2021 financial statements. I looked back. But we did run this through our national reviewer for the certificate program, and they believe this will now qualify for the certificate for 2024. So we'll get back to kind of that best practices in financial reporting certificate process. So they usually provide their comments within about six months or so, hopefully by the end of the fiscal year. Hopefully, by the end of the fiscal year, you'll have that information. The areas that we focused on here at the city, we always look at revenue recognition, especially here related to grants. Your sales tax revenues, your charges for services, those are all fairly straightforward in how they're recognized. Grants are mostly as well. When you spend a dollar that's eligible on a grant, you earn that money. But there's a lot of nuances to grant revenue recognition. We look more carefully at that, I would say. And the numbers can be really big, plus they come with federal compliance elements. Management override is what I was talking about with journal entries. So that's where, if you have something initially coded by an AP clerk into, say, materials and supplies, and somebody later moves it out of materials and supplies and puts it in utilities, that would be considered management override. So taking the original coding and changing it. That's sometimes very necessary if something is suddenly a prepaid expense or if it's accrual. But we look at those journal entries from a fraud risk perspective, or people moving things around because they're trying to hide something from the budget or trying to move something into an area that may not be seen. And we had no areas of concern in any of these testing. Obviously, we would have called the mayor way, way in advance if we had identified anything there. And the other thing I'll just mention is segregation of duties is important when you have such a small staff. You really do have a very efficient team here, a small number of people doing a huge amount of volume, which has been especially the case the last few years with all of the money running through the city. So you do have some super users. They're not just super at their job, they're also in the system have the administrative access to be able to add users or change user rights. So we look specifically at the journal entries or the activity that those super users are performing in the system as well. And no concerns or items to note as it relates to those things.
Mr. Gray.
So Joy, a great job so far, but coming back to management override of controls, on page ten, you talk about a correction to the miscellaneous capital project fund and vehicle replacement capital project fund where $27,000 and change was moved between the funds. So was it money that was supposed to be in one fund was misallocated? Or was it money that was dedicated by the council to be in one fund, was then moved to a different fund? That's a big difference.
Can I get to the journal entries next? Because I will cover that.
Sure.
Yep. Any questions on the risk areas? So on the corrected and uncorrected misstatements, and I'll cover that specifically, because it's an excellent question. So the first one here is just related to the balances in your capital assets. This is not a change in your total capital assets. It's moving it between two different categories of capital assets, where they originally was put into one, moved to the other from the supporting schedules. So the supporting schedules were correct. The general ledger was adjusted to match. The second one was for airport. So you have a lot of airport leases. I'm not sure how many you realize you have, and they get renewed at various times. So there was a new lease this year that was recorded, and it was just calculated incorrectly. If you remember back, harken back two years ago when we had the new lease standard, it's sort of a fake number. You have a lease receivable, and then we call a deferred inflow that offsets it on the balance sheet. So it kind of blows up your balance sheet. You show this asset for the life of the lease, you're going to have this $300,000 they're going to owe you, but it's a long-term receivable that's offset and then recognized as they actually pay you. So the income statement effect or the impact of the airport itself was only $5,000 for this current year, and that was really just a brand-new lease and a new team handling your leases. And so the recommendation there, and this was the item that we identified as kind of the area for recommendation, the recommendation there is just more sets of eyes looking at those lease schedules when they do get calculated. It's not that complicated, but you do have to discount the present value, the payments, and so it's sort of a bunch of make-work that the accounting people put in place, but it does show up in your financial statements overall. And then the last item was really a movement between two funds. It was budgeted, it was correct, but it was more correctly recorded into the vehicle replacement fund. So what ended up happening here is it was identified as part of your team's reconciliation of your capital assets, and because it was coming out of the one fund when it was capitalized, it was moved correctly to reflect on the financial statements correctly. So it wasn't coded incorrectly, it wasn't a budget violation or anything like that, but the coding was more correct, $22,000, $27,000 to move it out of that other fund instead of the, we moved it into the correct fund from where it came from because it was related to, I believe this one was related to a vehicle, it was a truck purchase. Yes, that was the truck. Yeah. So, you know, those are, hopefully answers your question.
Yeah, I think it does. The coding error explains a lot. My question was, I mean, was somebody directed to move money?
Not to my knowledge.
You know, so if it was just to correct the code, it's not a big deal.
We didn't identify anything like that. Honestly, this one wouldn't have probably popped up in any of our samples, or, you know, sometimes they randomly do, but it's not a high enough dollar amount for it to really crop up in our materiality thresholds. We just happened upon it, and so we did end up diving in deeper to make sure there weren't any other issues and didn't have any problems with that.
Joy, you, correct me if I'm wrong, but you just moved it, you moved it from one on the balance sheet.
I believe these are in governmental funds, so I think they were, they were moved on the income statement as well. There might be one other question.
Mr. Johnson.
Madam Mayor, so when you move, I'm not a real whiz at this, but I've been burned a couple of times, and so now I'm dealing with the previous burn, burn patterns here. When you move it from one capital project to, say, another capital fund, that tends to change the categorization of it in terms of its net present value, especially when you project it out. So moving it between these funds can have some, some real distinct changes down the line. Is that not correct?
Yeah, in this case, it wouldn't because they're considered governmental capital assets, and I think it might be easier to see it, I can show you on the financial statements, but they're both considered, so you have vehicle replacement as a capital project fund, and then you have miscellaneous capital project funds. You actually have four capital project funds, and those track governmental capital projects. Governments are interesting in the way that they track capital, unless it's in an enterprise fund like the water fund or something like that, you actually expense your capital because you're budgeting for it as an expense. So it's just moving the expense from one to the other.
Your depreciation, depending on your capital resource, doesn't, changes sometimes.
It can. In this case, this was identified in the year it was done, so it didn't change the depreciation at all. It was capitalized correctly. Actually, the capital asset schedule provided by your team identified the error, but it didn't then tie to the financial statement. So that's part of why we don't have a recommendation for this, because your team identified the error. Just by the time we had started the audit, the financial record hadn't yet been updated. So the capital assets tend to be reconciled after we get the basic financial information because they're not actually tracked. Governmental fixed assets or capital assets are not actually tracked in your general ledger, which is unusual if you're coming from the private business world, that's the main thing you track. But in the governmental world, those are kept separately and reported separately. Great, great discussion. I've already covered a lot of the things I would have talked about, so that'll make the rest of this go really quickly. Internal controls, we talked about the fact that we, you know, have always look at your controls in place, especially as it relates to that segregation of duties. IT controls continue to be more and more important with each audit. Who has access to your system? What can they do? So those are called user access and user access rights. We also look carefully at money coming in the door and money going out the door. Do you have good controls over those? And especially over your bank reconciliations and the control of cash. In your case, you know, we also, with turnover, we're looking pretty closely at how the control systems changed, and when there were empty positions, who was compensating for that? What review controls were in place for that? We have to do this for both financial statements and single audit for grant compliance. So it's not just about who can approve an invoice for payment, it's also about who can approve a report to be submitted to the federal government, right? So it's controls over both of those things. The things that we identified, the lease review, we already talked about. Really, this is just a keying error in a calculation for a lease receivable, and that has already been corrected. Your team's already got a plate, a review process that has been revised to address that. Again, it had a minimal impact on the actual net income for the airport. And the other, we reported again last year to you, this is what I consider to be a management advice suggestion. You do have super users, very common in Alaska. I'm not concerned about it. The big thing is that you continue to have good, what we call detective control. So on the backend, somebody's checking the work that is being done by the super user. Functionally, the only way you get rid of that is if an IT person is willing and understands enough about the nuances of the accounting department's workings to be able to set people up and give them the correct user rights. So you can do that. Some of our cities have started doing that, but I would say most of my cities have at least one or two super users.
Madam Mayor. Joy, if I could just get a little clarification here, once again, talking about the super user access identified as a control deficiency. The last sentence you have in your comments says, "We recommend the city continue compensating controls to ensure..." I have no idea what compensating controls are or means. Can you maybe?
Sure.
Dump that down a little bit?
It's definitely in audit language that I will absolutely translate. So the basic idea is that an internal control is designed to prevent or detect an error. So if I wrote a check to the wrong person, a check signer should theoretically check that and not sign the check before it goes out the door. That would be a preventive control. A detective control is the check went out the door, but somebody doing a bank reconciliation would see, oh, wait a minute, that's not clearing. Why isn't it clearing? Oh, they never got the check. They can double-check to make sure that it was sent to the right vendor or to the right address or something like that. That would be a detective control. So controls are just things that are in place to find or prevent an error. A compensating control is a, when you have two different complementary controls. So maybe you have a super user, but you also have review of all the journal entries. So yes, you do have journal entry, and that's the case in your, in your system. You do have super users, but outside the system, you also have review of every single journal that's being recorded in the system and a system where you're tracking all the journals that are. So if somebody were to go in and change a journal number or go in and post a journal entry without anybody knowing about it, it would get caught on the side. So this is a compensating control. This, this control of super user access, in a sense, is not in place because you do have somebody who has super user access, but you have other controls that compensate for it, and that's why we use the word compensating control. So just different controls that are designed to address the issue or the risk associated with the failure of the first.
Thank you.
In terms of compliance, nothing to report here. A very boring compliance audit, although Cassie and I were just reminded how boring it was not in the sense that it's a very difficult program, there's not a lot of guidance on, on the program, and so there was just a little bit more work to be done as it relates to the grant itself. But it worked out really well, and you were very compliant with all of the requirements as we found. Otherwise, I just want to remind you that your statements do contain some estimates. For example, your allowance for uncollectible accounts, typically speaking, people pay you, they like having their water turned on, they like having services. Then you also have depreciation estimates included in your statements, your pension liability, which you cannot pay off in advance, it's based on a valuation report from the state, and a discount rate for your leases and your subscription-based IT arrangements. Those are all considered estimates in your statements. And so otherwise, for the most part, things are just hard and fast. If you have a dollar in the bank, you're going to see it in here. If you paid a payroll dollar, you're going to see it in here. Pretty much everything else in the statements is a hard and fast number. And you didn't implement any new standards this year, thankfully. It's been a long run of several new standards. There is a new one coming up next year related to compensated absences. So I know your team's already looking at accrued leave and the different categories of leave available to your employees. You may get a conversation with the finance team as you move into this, towards the end of the fiscal year, because you may need to make revisions, slight revisions to your policies for that, depending on how that standard will impact you for next year. Otherwise, I don't have any other required communications to go through with you on that. Do you have any other questions on the wrap-up before we look at approximately five pages on this statement? Just in case you're worried, I tried to tell you there are only going to be five. So, great. Let's look quickly at the table of contents, everybody's favorite section, I know. But for me, I think it's helpful for you to know what's in here. These are not the five pages I plan to cover, but I will just say that because you're submitting what we call an act for, an annual comprehensive financial report to the Government Finance Officers Association, it's a lot of words, but you're submitting this externally. So there's a lot of things included in this packet that are required by GFOA that are not necessarily required as part of an audit. You have introductory section. The letter of transmittal is a great one to take if you ever go to DC and you have to explain what your city does, just an overview of your city. City officials are listed and the organizational chart. And then under the financial section, you'll see our independent auditors report already covered. I've already covered the results of that, so I'm not going to go through it with you. And then the management discussion analysis is worth a read if you've not already read it. It does show you the changes from last year to this year. The basic financial statements are what you paid me to audit. So this is actually the parts of the audit that are covered by my opinion. We'll cover a couple key statements there. And then the notes on page twenty-nine to sixty-two, if you want more information about the things that are in there, you can go to the notes. So if you want to know what's in capital assets, you can go to the capital assets note. And you can go for information on pensions. I think there are seventeen pages of pension information, should you care to read them. The next section is a little bit more information about the pension, and then here's the budget to actual schedule for the general fund that's really helpful if you're looking for more detail. Again, this is looking back at twenty-four, so here we are midway through twenty-five. You should make decisions based on information you have now, but it's good to look back and see how that worked out. And then the supplementary information is provided to provide really historical information. This is something that'll stay in your books for a long time, so you can always find more detail in the back. And then the last section I'll cover, they all just mentioned, is you have a tab here for statistics. The statistics are really interesting. Many of them give you ten years of history. So if you're just looking at financial history or statistical information going back ten years, the statistics are the place to go. And this is a really good reference as a, as a public official about your city as well. So I just encourage you to be familiar with the information included in the statistics. And then I'll cover a couple highlights, have the statements themselves. Cassie's put together the MDA, and it's really well-written. It provides a little more context than I'll give you, and as I said prior to current year information. And I'm going to start on page eighteen. I don't know how to pull that up here, but because everybody has a copy, is it okay to follow along on paper?
There's copies in the back.
What's that? Yeah, okay. All right, so page eighteen is your...
They have these as well.
Yes, they do. I didn't know if you wanted me to follow along on the screen or not.
Oh, we don't, we don't have the AMO.
Okay. Okay, so the statement of net position, just to give you a little context, this shows you on June thirtieth, 2024, what you had in assets, liabilities, and what's left over is called net position. So assets are simply things that you own. The largest category of those are your capital assets, you know, $65 million in governmental, and then you have about the same amount actually in business type, which are your enterprise funds. And then you also have a significant amount of cash and investments. We'll look at that in a little bit, total there of almost $80 million in cash and investments. So when we look at, from an audit perspective, we spend a lot of time on those two assets, cash and investments and your capital assets. We do test quite a lot of the other categories as well. You'll notice that there's a net other post-employment benefit asset this year. That is what we call OPEB. This is part of the pension system at the state. It's the health benefits portion. There's actually three OPEB plans that you're participating in at the state. Several of them are in an asset position now, which is exciting. So you actually show a positive number for that, but it's not really your asset that you can access. And liabilities, things that you owe to others. You can see total liabilities, about $20 million plus change related to deferred inflows. You don't have any long-term debt to speak of. You really don't have any bonds or loans or anything like that. I know you take great pride in that, which is great. I mean, do you see the leases on there? That is also corresponds to an asset. So these are small assets that are under a capital lease arrangement, and same thing with subscriptions, where your contracts require you to have a multi-year subscription for an IT asset. And then the pension liability is the only big one there. You can't pay that. You can't pay that down. You're paying it down with your 22% contribution rate with each paycheck, payroll. Although I think here the state system is down, so I'm not entirely sure how those are being allocated right now. And then what's left over is your net position, but in order to look at that, I'd actually like to flip over to page 20, page 20. So you can see the net position here is actually at the fund level. We call it fund balance at the fund level. And the fund balance for the general fund is 56.8 million, it's majority of what's in there. You also have some in capital projects that you, as a council, have already voted to move into those capital projects for various reasons. So, you know, overall, in the general fund, you have 56 million of fund balance. 36 million of that has been committed by you as a council, as, you know, set aside for capital. And then you've got 18 million and unassigned. And so what does that actually mean? When you go to the, page 22, if you could. This is going to show you, instead of on June 30th, it's going to show you throughout the year. So through the whole year, revenues coming in, expenditures going out the door. Overall, with your governmental funds, you were a positive 8.6 million when you compare revenues to expenditures. Back out your transfers of about $2 million net to get to about 6.5 million. In the general fund, you're a positive 5.8 million. Sales tax revenues did increase this year, and your investment income, which, some of which is, you know, unrealized. Your investment income also performed very well in '24. Overall, the general fund has $22.8 million of expenditures, and you are subsidizing some of your enterprise funds as well. So I did a quick calculation of, you take your expenditures in the general fund plus some of those subsidies, and you look at your unrestricted general fund fund balance, you have about nine and a half months of unrestricted fund balance in the general fund. So just, I like to kind of throw those numbers out there, but as a council, when you're looking at how are you using your fund balance and how you're operating the city, nine, nine and a half months of operations, anything below six months, I get worried. That being said, you do have a significant amount, 36 million, set aside for capital. So if there is an emergency, the money's there. It's not as if you're going to run out quickly. But, you know, generally speaking, anything less than six months, I start talking to my councils about sustainability. If you include that 36 million, you're, you're a lot more than that. You're three times that. So that's excellent. But in terms of what's unrestricted right now, you need a certain amount for working capital to pay your bills, pay your employees, to wait for your granters to fund your money and tell you right now, there's a little uncertainty about funding and how it's going to come through. So I'd like to point that out. And then I want to finish up by looking at page 26, and it's just page 26. See, that's my fifth page. Page 26 is your enterprise fund operations. So this is showing you the, you know, the revenues and expenses for your enterprise funds. So you have four of them, water sewer, municipal airport, and the sports center. I spend more time than I would like inside your sports center. It's excellent facility, but it is not generating enough money to cover its costs, and you're subsidizing that out of the general fund. If you look just overall at your, your enterprise funds, even if you take depreciation out of the equation, and if you're looking at, if you're opening the book on it, you can see it really easily on the cash flow, your operations are cash negative in all four of your enterprise funds. And I had the privilege of listening to your presentation about your utility systems and water. And one thing I just want to warn you about in research, it would be something, this is not planned, I just heard it, so I wanted to throw it out there, is one thing we see sometimes with aging water and sewer systems in Alaska is rate shock. And when, you know, when you're not yet recovering, still not recovering enough money to cover your costs or you're subsidizing your utilities, if you do have aging infrastructure and you have to do capital investment, that, that can be a problem with having additional, aging systems tend to cost more money to maintain, but also if you have to replace them and you can't get grant money to replace them, then you have to start charging for depreciation. And you're not currently doing that. So I just want to kind of point that out, just overall, there are operating losses in all of your enterprise funds. We see airports often be under, to be having operating losses because FAA is pouring so much money into the airports. Airports typically, you know, never recover the full cost of capital. You've done an excellent job over the years of covering capital with either general fund capital, preventing you from having to go out for dead, or getting really good grant monies or loan monies in the past from your enterprise funds. So I just want to point that out. There are some great water sewer loans out there from GUC at one and a half percent. Many of them are being forgiven over time. So there's things to look at there, but the enterprise funds, when I look at them at a high level, aren't sustainable at the level that they're at. So I wanted to point that out to you. I'm sure that's not a popular thing to say, but I'm going to say it anyway. And otherwise, I just wanted to say, you know, there is a lot more information in here. You're welcome to look through them. I had the pleasure of working with your team, not just on the audit, but they came to the Alaska GFOA conference, and we talked with them there about sustainability. And I know they're really committed to making sure that the books and records are solid, that they're doing everything they can to follow your budget, follow your directives, and produce excellent financial information. So with that, I'll open it up to other questions and just thank you for your time.
Mr. Graham.
Thank you. Thank you, Joey. Very comprehensive report, like to give every year, so thank you very much. If we could look at page 18 of your magic book here. Question for you, kind of, under the liabilities, deferred inflows, et cetera, about halfway down on non-current liabilities due within a year, compensated absences. Could you describe that? Is that how much we paid for people to go on leave? What is a compensated absence? Now, when it says due within one year, was that due in 2024 or is that going to be due in 2025?
Right. So one clarifying question, which I, one clarifying point, which I did not point out, these financial statements are your management team's financial statements. I'm going to answer your question because I just, I know what the answer is. But I would just encourage you to, I always want to remind people that we audit these, that we don't, you know, we don't take responsibility for them. That being said, compensated absences are, in your case, accrued leave. So it's the amount at, on June 30th, at the end of the year, across all of your employees, across all the hours they've accumulated. There's 1.25 million dollars of accumulated annual leave that they haven't taken.
So if everybody quit at once, we'd have to pay...
In theory, you'd have to pay 1.25. Now, the number grows just because people get raises.
Exactly.
And they, you know, municipal employees tend not to take as many vacations as they should.
So the heading here, due within a year, is misleading.
Well, it is and it isn't, because what happens is it sort of cycles. In theory, and actually, we looked at that this year. I know this in particular because we looked at this on my work paper, because it wasn't quite 1.25 million that was taken during 2024. So this is kind of the first year where the amount you've accumulated is just slightly more than the amount everybody used during the year, but it's very close. So generally speaking, you use all this old leave and you accrue new leave. But this represents a little bit more than one year's worth of your employees' leave, generally speaking. And so it will all, this should all be, or most of it would be used over the course of '25 and then replaced with new hours. And I will just say that accounting standard and the way this is presented is the new standard that goes into effect for '25. So this will change next year's statements when your team puts these together for '25. Those, the presentation of accrued leave or compensated absences will change with the implementation of GASB 101.
If I could follow up? If I could follow up, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So my life in the civilian world kind of showed me that with compensated leave, people, an organization, a fairly, you know, significant organization, and we're a pretty large organization here, tends to use about 80% of what they accrue in any one year, and then about 20% of that carries forward. I mean, some people have, you know, I think in our case, we're pretty well limited to around 500 hours of leave maximum, but is this number here, is this 100%? Is this based on 100% of accrued leave being used? I didn't quite understand.
So generally, historically, you've reported 100% of your leave in due within one year because 100% of that leave has been used within the next year. This year, it's very close to that number. There's no way of knowing exactly how much leave someone will take in the next year. So your team, because those numbers are, it's a good approximation. I guess this is technically an estimate of some kind. You have to estimate how much of that leave is going to be used over the next year.
But this 1.2 million says that we are allocating for employees 1.2 million dollars in leave.
The total accumulated balance of accumulated, of accrued leave at the end of the year, based on employee rates at that time and the balances that they had available at that time, is 1.25 million. Yes.
Okay, so I...
We don't know how much they're going to take in 2025, but the presumption is they will use all of it.
So the 1.0, and I swear this is my last question. So the 1.2 million here might, and this is just a number I'm pulling out of the air, might reflect a million dollars worth of leave that we've granted and then $200,000 worth of leave that the employee already had in the bank from previous years that they used, or is it all for 2024?
It depends on the employee. Some people would have used it all. This number just represents the accumulated amount, accumulated amount for all employees for all time.
For all time, there we go. Thank you.
For all time.
That was a magic question. Sorry, I took some...
It's okay. If you never took a vacation, you worked here for five years, your number would be in there. If you've worked here for three months, your number's in there.
Thank you.
Well, it's always a pleasure.
I know. It's good to see you.
Nice to see you as well. Have a wonderful rest of your meeting.
Thank you, Joey. Madam Deputy Clerk, will you please read the next item? Under New Business.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. AM number 25-03, acceptance, acceptance of the City of Wasilla's Fiscal Year 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for Public Record.
Is there a motion to adopt AM number 25-03?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt IM number 25. Yeah, whatever. I move up for adoption.
See what happens when all folks stay too late? Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, Cottle, second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Cottle to adopt AM number 25-03. Is there a discussion?
Yes, ma'am. So a quick question for finance. It's my understanding that a penalty waiver for sales tax collection is a one-time thing. Is that correct? Because I seem to recognize a, the name of a business on here, and I'm not going to mention it, that has appeared in previous reports. Is it?
Would you mind turning that up? A penalty waiver is, during the mayor, excuse me, Cassie Olin, Director of Finance. A penalty waiver for a business is you have 12 consecutive months of...
12 months.
Yep, and then you can have another penalty waiver after that.
Thank you.
Okay, further discussion. Here are none. Is there objection to the motion? Here are none. Motion passes. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next item under New Business is IM number 25-02, Quarterly Financial Reports for the Period Ending December 31st, 2024, to Include the Month-to-Date Expenditure Report, Disbursements Greater Than $10,000, Investment Report, Quarterly Report of Businesses Receiving a Penalty Waiver for Sales Tax. And this was pulled by Councilmember Graham under approval of the agenda.
Is there a, do we need a motion for this? This is just information.
Yeah, so I would just, it's open for discussion. It's just communication.
All right, the informational memorandum is open for discussion, and Mr. Graham, you pulled it.
Yeah, Cassie just answered the question, so I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Cassie. And we are to, audience comments. Oh, sorry.
We do have one item under Communications, and that's Planning Commission Minutes of January 14th, 2025.
Okay. Now we're on to audience comments. Seeing nobody, we will close. Audience comments. And bring it back to the dais. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to request a member from the body and amend the agenda to add a discussion item, item 10.4, so we can discuss upcoming meetings, to make it cleaner.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to amend the agenda so we can add a discussion item for upcoming meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Crafton.
Okay, the motion has been made. Is there a second?
Rubio, seconds.
The motion's been made by Mr. Crafton and seconded by Rubio. Is there discussion?
Madam Mayor, I think the clerk has some things she wanted to...
Oh, thank you. I distributed these memos to council, and I wanted to first address rescheduling or canceling the meeting on Thursday. If you, this is on the green one.
Okay. Is there discussion on canceling the meeting on Thursday?
Is there, Madam Mayor? Is there a reason for this?
As you know, the clerk, the clerk is currently out of the office, and she's scheduled to return February 24th. Due to her absence, she's requested that we reschedule the special meeting originally set for February 13th regarding the council, clerk, and records management budgets. We have three options on the green memo. One, move the meeting to February 27th. Option two, move the meeting to March 6th. Option three, add the agenda items to the regular meeting on March 13th.
Ms. Rubio.
Yeah. So I opt to move, because our clerk is gone, to the, add the agenda, option three, add the agenda items to the regular meeting on March 13th.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Graham?
Yeah, I would agree. Typically, that's a fairly short process. I mean, it's 20 minutes. We certainly don't need to have a special meeting to do that. But I do have a question. Is there a meeting on March 13th? Would it be the 10th? Would that be the regular meeting? I'm looking at my calendar here, and I'm not sure what I'm seeing.
That's supposed to be the 10th.
Thank you.
It'll be the 10th. Thank you. But yeah, I support what Ms. Rubio has pontificated. Thank you.
Do we need the motion restated, just for clarification?
Councilmember Rubio made the motion to reschedule it to March 13th. Upon the correction, it will be rescheduled to March 10th.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay, it's been made by Councilmember Rubio, seconded by Councilmember Crafton. Is there further discussion? Here are none. Is there objection to the motion? Here are none. It will be moved to March the 10th. Okay, and the next one. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Okay, thank you. This is about res, not rescheduling, scheduling meetings for the Title 16 rewrite. We need to have a meeting, a joint meeting with the Planning Commission.
Okay, I need a motion on... When is it?
Madam Mayor, that's what I think we're going to make, a motion. We're going to make a motion to make the special meeting February 27th if we can. And that would be... And that would be, probably need an approval of the attorney.
I would have no problem with, I mean, when would, I still have a couple, I probably need three days to get it finalized and get the Planning Commission's latest comments fully incorporated. So for the clerk's office, what is the, I just want to make sure that we're doing the math for the notice. I know you guys like to give a week. And with it being just a joint meeting, if it, there's a little wiggle room on the days, like, let's say you get it Thursday.
Could you have it to us by? When could you get it to us by?
I truly believe I can get it to you by Thursday. I would love to have till Monday, though. What happens if I, I'd love to have a weekend when I'm building.
We would love to give you until Monday.
Oh, this is, that feels very good. Thank you. So that would still allow for the February 27th meeting?
Just so you know, Monday's a holiday. It's President's Day.
Seventeenth is a holiday.
I'm just letting you know.
Thank you, Ian.
Yeah.
Councilmember Crafton.
Okay, it still works.
I have a question. Yeah, and I just want to make sure you're able to get everything you need done with having that holiday there. We just need one meeting with, as a joint session, to kind of basically do a whole rundown of the entire thing. Is that what I'm understanding? And then we'll move to a regular meeting?
That's what I'm anticipating. I mean, the Planning Commission has spent a lot of time going through. Counsel spent a lot of time going through and going through each division within the title. I, I do believe this will be an opportunity for everyone to have the actual Title 16 with all of the changes. There are some changes that the council never really directed a change, but there was more discussion. I'll point those out. What I've prepared, so what you will have in front of you is the Title 16 with all of counsel and the Planning Commission's comments incorporated, where they were clear and I could do so, or they did not contradict. And then you'll have a memo that just runs through, hey, these are the changes that you'll find incorporated into this, that are different from the changes. So that way, the clerk can just take that packet and add it to the packet with the more comprehensive memo and all the, so if there's something you think you may want to have in front of you that's different than what's in your binder, or what we've had besides those two things, if you could let the clerk's office know, that'd be great. I just want to make sure we move fast. And I, again, if counsel wants to move slow, we can also do that. But I feel like one of the things that I've heard from you is, let's get in front of this building season, so.
So to clarify here, the intent, the intent of this meeting is to basically have both bodies together and run down with essentially the updated version that we've discussed, including everybody's comments that we've gone over. We're not going to be, are we going to be discussing further changes before the final ordinance comes before us and starts introduction? Reason why I ask is, I mean, I'd rather be safe than sorry. And if we need to schedule two meetings and cancel the second one, I'd rather do that than not get through everything the first meeting. And then now we have to publicly notice a new meet, another meeting, and we're, you know, another week out, and we delay the entire process. I mean, that's, that's where my thought process is here, is I want to make sure that we at least have everything we need so we don't have to further delay this.
I would say, what I would recommend, I think this is in line with what you're saying, is just have the joint meeting, and what you get done, you get done, and the introduction for the ordinance comes the next meeting. You know, I mean, it's, I would not say that so flippantly, had counsel not put in the amount of time that counsel has put in going through this. So, you know, to the extent there needs to be changes and it's been introduced, we can push the meeting. But you have more flexibility on that second meeting. Maybe you put a special meeting for adoption. You layer it on the backend and have an additional public hearing. But to get that introduced, that ordinance sponsored and introduced moving forward, since it has to go through both bodies. I don't know. I mean, that might.
That works for me. I'm fine with it. I just, if we get through it, we get through it. If we don't, we don't. I mean, we've all seen this many, many times at this point, and we're going to see it. The plan is to have it, looks like three or four more meetings with this anyways, so that works for me. I just wanted to clarify that.
The clerk's office will bring sugar.
caffeine.
So we have the motion, right?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
So we need a motion to make our special meeting on February 27th?
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
The motion's been made by Councilmember Rubio, seconded by Councilmember Crafton to have the special meeting February 27th for the purpose of meeting with the Planning Commission on Title 16. Is there further discussion?
Madam Mayor, maybe to the clerk, do we want a second date that's tentative in case the Planning Commission can't make that? Or something in mind that we discuss here openly, so we are all agreeing to a second date if possible?
Do, how about March 4th?
Well, no, I'm okay with the 27th. I'm just saying that.
No, 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 in addition to a 10, okay. We have a lot of, it looks like.
I'm just saying, so if, if too many Planning Commissioners come back and say, we can't make the 27th, we go, okay, great, can you make the? The 6th, you know, like a week later, would that work for everybody?
No, can we do it March 4th?
That works for me, yeah.
I'll be on an airplane. You're already gone, okay.
27th is out for me.
Um, March 3rd, I'm here on March. Yeah, just trying to get it before the mayor.
I like that idea, so let's shoot for the 27th and then.
Maybe we just move it to March 3rd, so that that gives you time.
That's true. I might, I mean, are you?
And it would be final, and you're here.
And again, I'm going to try very hard to get it done this week. But if I did get it to you on Monday, that would have you working the holiday to get it posted, right?
So can I change my motion?
Whatever counsel selects for the date will work for me.
Is there objection, objection from the body of moving the date from February 27th to March 3rd? Okay.
Second Mayor, one sec.
Okay. Is there discussion? Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the special meeting will be March 3rd. Okay, did I take care of that?
Mayor, is that at 5:00 PM? I just want to make sure the timing.
Oh, 5:00 PM.
5:00 PM or 6:00 PM?
Yeah, 5:00 PM works great.
Or 6:00 PM. I just wasn't sure with the timing.
Six.
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 Six. 12 times 6.
Okay.
We've had special meetings at 5:00 before.
This is a lot heavier. I'm okay with 5:00.
Check with the body of the others and see if they want to.
I just assumed it would be at 6:00 PM. Is everybody available to make a 5:00 PM?
I would think the, I know a lot of the Planning Commission members might not be able to.
Okay, so let's pick 5:00 or 6:00.
I don't think there's that much to do.
Mr. Crafton, could you explain? You said you don't think a lot of the Planning Commission could make it at 5:00.
I know a few of them have a nine-to-five job, and so some of them I don't think can make a 5:00 PM. Yeah, that's, that's the reason. I just know, I just happen to know where a few of them work, so.
It may be 6:00. We can discuss this till cows come home. It'll be March the 3rd. 6:00. Okay. All right. We will move on. You're through.
I do have one.
Okay, one more thing.
Next regular meeting is February 24th. If you haven't already, please complete your P O F D statements. Thank you.
Is that all? Okay, Madam Attorney.
I have no comment.
Councilmember Crafton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had one question for Eric about the dates for the meeting tomorrow for the airport. I was just curious what the time was again. Was it the airport, updated Menard Center?
Yeah, so it's 5:30 to 7:30 at the Menard Center. And there are notice signs on both sides of the Menard Center. So if you drive on Clapham, you'll see the sign alerting you to that meeting.
Thank you. That is all, other than just good, good conversation tonight. We'll see you guys later.
Councilmember Graham.
No comments.
What?
No.
Somebody.
Let's move on before he has anything.
It ain't him. Councilmember Baylock.
I'm just going to say no comment, too.
Councilmember Johnson.
Madam Mayor, on the 24th, unfortunately, I'm going to be flying at that point, so I will not make the next meeting.
Councilmember Rubio.
I feel like I should say no comment, but great discussions tonight on that comp plan. Looking forward to it, and I'll keep it short and sweet.
Councilmember Cottle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. First, kudos to the finance department on the audit. I read that thing word for word, line for line. I actually stayed awake. I think you did a great job, and thank you for that. I attended the Planning Commission's training session, but they did super good discussions. Holly, you did an amazing job. It was really good. Everybody that got these cards, that kind of came from that. And it was, it was just a great, it was a great planning session. And then I attended the transportation fair at the fairgrounds. Our public works department did an amazing job answering questions for our city projects. And I was really glad that I, you know, got to walk around and see all the different projects going on. And one of the things I learned that I didn't know from our borough fire department is they have a sign program. And you can get a sign from them, it's free of charge, with your house number on it, and you can do it vertically or horizontally. They'll ask you whichever way you want. If you live in the the district for Wassily here, I actually have a couple of the applications. You just fill it out and you just email it into them. Otherwise, just go to whatever fire district you live in, contact them. And these things are awesome. The purpose of this is so that they can easily find your place in the dark, because they're reflective. These are free. Very few people know about this program, so I just wanted to spread the word on that. So anybody that wants, I do have a couple of applications that they gave me for people. But this is just, it's awesome, so. Not just for fire trucks, but for EMS, they got to find you if you've got a medical emergency. It's just a good thing to have, so it's like, oh, is it that house or this driveway? You know, because that, that happens, so. And every minute counts in an emergency. So just, I really encourage everybody to get one of these signs, and you can't beat the cost, so. And that's all. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Next week, Mr. Graham. Nikki, are you going to AML and Kathy and Ian? And myself will be at AML. So, and after that, on March 6th, I fly. Crystal and I are going to the National League of Cities. And then I'm leaving DC and I'm going home for a week. So you guys enjoy while I'm gone. With that, we adjourn at 8:24.